We are.
Great, welcome, please raise your pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome to the Hubbard County Board of Commissioners meeting. You have the agenda before you. Are there any changes or corrections to it?
I'll make a motion to accept the agenda.
All right, Ted motion.
I'll second it.
Second, any discussion about it? All right, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Right, motion carried. We have the consent agenda. Oh, I'm sorry, public input, is there anyone for the public who would like to speak to the board today? Right, seeing no one, we have the consent agenda, is there any additions or corrections to the consent agenda?
None that I'm aware of, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve that with just a notation that I asked Ted to look into the HRDC membership and the membership of thirty-five hundred dollars.
Oh, okay, beyond the regular levy commitment.
Well, I was just curious, for some reason I haven't never noticed that, so.
Get some clarification on it?
Yeah.
Well, thank you. All right. All those in favor?
Oh, we need a second.
Nope, a second.
I'll second.
Okay, I'm sorry, all those in favor of approval? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Right, motion carried, county employee recognition. Mike?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
For county employee recognition today, in environmental services, we have Eric Beitner, environmental services director, is recognized for twenty years of service on January twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five. In human services, Christina Halsey, social worker, is recognized for service from September seventeen, two thousand eighteen, to February seventh, twenty twenty-five. And in the sheriff's office, Nicholas Obsole, deputy sheriff, is recognized for ten years of service on January thirtieth.
Thank you. All right, solid waste.
Good morning. All right, so the first item I have this morning is to review and approve land purchase from the Minnesota Department of Transportation for the LaPorte recycling site. Last fall, MINDOT reached out to us indicating they're planning to sell a portion of the property, their property along the state highway two hundred in county thirty-nine in LaPorte. We have been leasing that property for the last few years from MINDOT, and that is where we have our LaPorte recycling site. When we started leasing that property, we put in some improvements, adding fencing and kind of building up the base and the entrance into there, so we have invested some money into road and site improvements. The purchase price they're asking for the property is seventeen thousand dollars. And based on, by purchasing this property, you know, be able to continue to operate that site for recycling within, for the city of LaPorte there. We did review this with the county attorney, looking into title and history. We reviewed this with the property records department, making sure the document would be recordable and with GIS, and then also looked in with the market assessed value for the property, which also seemed reasonable as well for the acreage that it entails, so. I guess my recommendation would be to approve this land purchase and we continue to use it for our recycling site in LaPorte.
Is there any impact that you're aware of that might be happening during the road construction project going through LaPorte? On highway two hundred, did they say anything about any?
I guess I haven't heard, didn't hear anything.
All right.
You know, this is kind of outside, I think, their typical right-of-way area, so.
Okay, all right.
Josh, I'm just curious, because of our land sales, if we didn't purchase this and they want to get rid of it, would they put it on a state auction, do you know?
I don't, I think I asked that, it's been a few months, but I think they look at neighboring property owners first.
Okay.
And then, then I'm not sure if it has to go on an auction or how it'd be sold, but.
How did MINDOT get this property?
You know, I don't, I don't know, I'd look, looking back at the title history a little bit, you know, many years ago, they had just, it's kind of right at the corner of the intersection and they had bought it from the previous owner, so I don't know if it was related to a right-of-way issue then or something, but I guess I'm not sure when they acquired it, but.
Just curious.
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right, Ted motions, is there a second?
Sure.
Dave seconds, all right, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carried.
All right, thank you, and the next item I have is just, at this point, just for updates. Kind of wanted to give you some information, I guess, to what we're looking at with our organics grant and some of our organics purchases coming up. So as part of our, the one point five million MPC organics grant that we received last year, we're planning to purchase a live floor trailer to haul some of our organics materials up to the Polk County compost facility, including our shredded waste, and, you know, originally, we were thinking of purchasing this ourselves and doing the hauling, which doesn't make the most sense based on how we currently handle our waste, so. We're looking to partner with Beltrami County, right now, they handle all of our MSW hauling for Polk and Beltrami and Hubbard Counties, and they have a private contract with the private hauler to do the hauling. Beltrami County owns all of the trailers currently, so what we're looking at doing would be to partner with Beltrami County on this grant, and they would just add that trailer into their normal fleet in order to do our hauling for our organics materials. And since this is a grant, we had to just make sure, we looked through the, kind of the different steps of, just to make sure everything remains eligible for grant funding and reimbursement. So I kind of, in my board packet, kind of outlined the steps. You know, if we, if Beltrami County would purchase the trailer under their normal procurement practices, estimating the trailer cost is going to be between a hundred and five and a hundred and ten thousand dollars. Then we would do a board approval, just acknowledging that we'd be reimbursing Beltrami County the grant portion, which would be seventy-five percent of the trailer cost, and they would be responsible for the twenty-five percent match. Beltrami County would, you know, send us all the required paperwork, we'd submit the required paperwork to the MPC for reimbursement and then reimburse them for that grant portion of that seventy-five percent of the trailer. So I don't know if anyone has any questions on that, but it's just, you know, you know, I think it will make the most sense where Beltrami County will, you know, operate and own that trailer, add it into their fleet, and then we'll just reimburse them that portion of the grant, so.
Okay, any questions for Josh?
This will be happening in the summer?
Yeah, I think the trailer has, you know, I'm not sure the exactly timing of the trailer, but, you know, it'd be summer to fall, I suppose, before everything's executed, but they would, you'd start the purchase process here in the, you know, probably the next few weeks, but.
Thank you.
Josh, is the organic, our volume, is that increasing in our county, is it pretty, is it staying stable?
So I think we increased a little bit over this last year, mainly since we added the Neva School into the organics program. And then with this grant, we'll be, you know, targeting more, doing a campaign to target more commercial organics, so.
Do you think that households have increased, or is it pretty much staying?
Um, it's probably, I don't know, it's kind of hard to track, I think it's been, it seemed like it's been, definitely been stable and growing slowly, but I don't think it's been a huge increase, so. And we will have some more opportunities to bump that, those numbers up to with the grant that Polk County received, so. We'll be kind of rolling in some of them changes as well over the next year.
It takes a lot of room and garbage if you don't recycle your organics.
Yeah, it's a lot of weight, I mean, it's a majority of the weight in the waste stream, so.
Okay, anything else?
Uh, yeah, just the other item kind of related to this, I just wanted to discuss as well, is we're going to be bringing forward a quote here, probably in the next few meetings, to purchase some organic roll-off containers from Beltrami County. They're like the ones that we have out at the transfer station and are using at the schools. We're looking at getting two addition, two of those containers to add to our fleet, so we can, right now, we're using all four, we have four of them right now, and we're using them all, so it'd just help us to be able to grow that portion of our program a little bit. And the good thing with working at, with Beltrami County is, back when we originally worked as a region to get these containers, again, we had a grant, we're seventy-five percent, twenty-five percent state and local cost share, so we'd be able to get these from Beltrami for twenty, the twenty-five percent cost, which is a good deal, and they've probably, I'm guessing, with inflation, have increased even a lot more than that over the last five years, so. But that'll be coming again too in the next couple of meetings, so.
Okay, all right, well, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, we will move on to the sheriff.
All right, I just got a couple of quick items with me, is Nick Obsole, my current, and he's actually in his last week as our emergency manager, we'll start, be starting with a new one next week, and that'll be Troy Christensen. And Troy will give you an update in the near future on stuff that's happening, and. So anyway, first of all, requesting, and this, just to let you know, the state is a whole year behind on this, as you can see, it's a twenty twenty-three emergency management performance grants, we're looking for the board to approve a resolution for, for that, so we can get the funds, you know, reimbursed from the state. And basically, I think we get forty percent of our EM's wages out of that, so. And that total, as you can see, is twenty-one thousand, one hundred and fifty-eight dollars, so we're looking for approval for a resolution for that.
All right, is there a motion?
So moved.
All right, Ted moves, is there a second?
I'll second.
Dave seconds, all right, any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right, motion carried.
Did you want to touch bases on anything in particular on that, or no?
Uh, not so much, I think you pretty much covered it, just the reimbursement aspect, it is a fifty percent match of particular wages for emergency management. Sheriff already provided the totals, and you guys have them in front of you, um, yeah, kind of just the last step before I get reimbursement, and like Sheriff Akas said, the state is quite behind on processing these applications. I believe the twenty twenty-four one isn't even out yet, the application hasn't even been released yet for previous year.
That's convenient.
They're getting interest on our dollars, so. So, all right, second item is, the Hubbard County jail has washing machines, as you can imagine, one of them is on end of life, it all rusted out, so we're looking to approve the purchase of a new one. Low quote out of three of them that we received was twelve thousand, one hundred and twenty-seven dollars from RJ Cool out of Mendota Heights, and that'll be paid for out of their budgeted equipment dollars.
Is it in stock, Cory?
I believe so.
Okay, and does that include delivery?
That's the total, correct.
Yep, okay, so I will move to approve the low quote.
All right, I'll second, is there any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carried.
That's the only two things that I had, unless the board has any questions.
Mr. Chair, I have a question for Cory, so we had Minnesota rural counties yesterday, and discussion happened, and you who are on Northwest Jubinal, they referred to this, that the DOC is changing definition, if I can use that word, about the practices that have gone on for twenty-five years, and they're kind of redefining how things are, and they're finding that the smaller counties are being asked to staff at a higher level, but there aren't even inmates to warrant the two jailers, I can't remember which county gave that example. Are you experiencing any of that in Hubbard?
We have, you know, I think a lot of it depends on who our jail inspector is.
Okay.
And this has been this way for, I mean, I've been here thirty-five years, and it has always been a very controversial issue, and it just depends on who from the DOC that you ask, and you will get a different answer. So I totally agree with you, our standards have certainly changed, you know, recently. And what I'm saying is, when, when they'll give, you know, numbers as far as how many jailers you need for a specific number of inmates, yeah, that has changed in recent years, where they've actually lowered it, so we've had to bump up some staff because of it. And it's, it's simply, it's, it's just not right, I mean, there's just no consistency there, unfortunately. So, yeah, we have experienced that as well.
Okay.
Definitely, you bet.
Okay, anything else?
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to environmental services.
Morning.
Morning.
Congratulations on twenty years.
Thank you, sorry, I forgot to come up for that, didn't I?
I actually remember when you moved here.
I've got two items for the board this morning, and they're both related to the topic of the governor's budget for this year, and one of the items that he's proposed in that budget proposal, which is to reduce the funding that's in statute for AIS prevention aid. The money originally was placed in statute by Senator Rod Sroy when he was in office for the express purpose of safeguarding it against short-budget situations, so it's kind of interesting that another DFLer is now the one that's proposing to reduce that. So the first item that we had is a solicitation from Wildlife Forever, CD Three Systems, which is a private organization that sells, it's kind of like a self-use kiosk for people to clean off their watercraft when they leave a public access, and also Minnesota Lakes and Rivers, which is a nonprofit that advocates for environmental issues related to lakes and rivers. So they've put a draft letter together, and they sent it out to counties, asking if any of the counties would like to join in as cosigners of that letter to send to the governor. So the question for the board is whether that's something that you would like to do or not, or if you'd prefer to send your own communication on the matter to the governor, or potentially, we could channel that through other means, through our legislators as well.
So, Mr. Chair, yesterday at the MRC, we had a discussion on this, because somebody brought this up, talked about how the current funding mechanism is really benefiting the entire state, and encouraged us as counties to support this, and also the next one that Eric's going to bring up. Chances of us coming up with some money out of our budgets is probably not real great. So I would make a motion to approve.
All right, there's a motion, is there a second?
This is Ted, I'll second, and I'd also like to point out that in Hubbard County, we have a lot of partition, participation from township, cities, and lake associations. If the numbers here are correct, a hundred and seventy-nine thousand, four hundred and eighty-four dollars. I mean, that's showing a commitment to something that they feel is needed, and I think we should support that.
Okay, any more discussion? All right, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carried.
Thank you. The second item, again, related to the first, is just correspondence that was provided from the Hubbard County Coalition of Lake Associations, expressing similar concern for the governor's proposal to reduce AIS funding, and then they provided information in a packet that kind of speaks to what the efficacy of the program has been to date, and in the importance of continuing the current level of funding.
All right, are there any?
So, there's, I don't know that there's any action that's required on this other item, but it was informational that Cola had asked that it be shared with the board.
Okay.
I think it was interesting.
The action you took with the other matter of supporting the fund, maintaining the current funding through signing that letter addresses Cola's concern.
Yes, okay.
So when does this cutting of budget take effect, is that going to affect this year?
No, it would be for the next biennium, that they would reduce it in half, and then the proposal would then carry it even further in the following biennium, and reducing it completely.
The actual proposal is fifty percent reduction in the next biennium, and as Eric mentioned, zeroing out that account by twenty twenty-nine. And I've already, while I was sitting at a, in a meeting at, well, last week when we were down at Leadership, and got this information from AMC, texted Eric and got the impact that our, our award is two hundred and sixty-three dollars plus that hundred and eighty thousand dollars of matching funds, is four hundred and forty, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of impact in the county, A, that's providing jobs, and B, that's doing good work. And because this would be elective, if we didn't have that two hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars, it probably wouldn't leverage the hundred and seventy-nine, which means that it would be up to the board to decide if they were going to fund that four hundred and fifty thousand dollars or not. And it would be a tough ask, especially when we get to some other impacts that you're going to hear about during the administrator's report, so. That's what I shared with him immediately, and so when John came to my office, and I knew Eric had already had this item on there, I said, well, we're all saying the same thing. And from what I hear and gather is that you're supporting the same thing, that that's important in our county, and this proposal would, would damage that.
So Tom, just, just to refer what was talked to yesterday, of course, this is just a proposed budget, and, you know, hopefully, there's going to be lots of talks, but Walz's budget currently is to shift eight hundred and forty million dollars from state funding to counties. And so AMC and MRC have sent a letter expressing concerns about the major cop shifts to the Star Tribune, but at this point, the Star Tribune is refusing to print it. So, and of course, because a budget has to be passed, part of the concern is, is when the House is actually going to start meeting, and how much time they'll have to look at the budgets, and Brian will be discussing more on something that won't impact. And Brian will be discussing more on something that won't impact our counties so much because we're already doing several things, but other counties, they're looking at major, major dollars. So, what were you going to say?
Did they give a reason why they're refusing to print it?
They did not. And so, somebody from another county suggested that they would go to other newspapers.
And I should mention, too, that with the program, we have had savings annually that we've been kind of setting aside because I anticipated someday we would be where we are currently. So, we should have at least a year, possibly two, of funds available to continue to operate at relatively the same level if, you know, the worst case happens and it does get zeroed out in a few years.
Okay. So, out of curiosity, too, I don't know, Eric, you know the answer to this or not, but looking at the documentation here, I was curious, you know, on the control and rapid response, 25% being spent on, how effective is it? Is it working?
You're able to contain some of the types of invasives, others you can't. So, you know, early on in the program, you know, we were allocating money for that purpose. And then as infestations would occur and the DNR would try various treatment methodologies, they weren't finding that they were very successful. So, the state kind of seemed to have backed off from putting money toward that. So, it's, that's why we kind of shifted gears and haven't really, you know, we've made it available, and some lakes have taken advantage of that for some treatment that they've done. But they haven't been able to remove it.
Eric, whatever happened to, you remember the tests they had about putting, you know, putting those devices in water for, it didn't increase the oxygen. Do you remember? What happened with that? Yeah, it was presented at MRC. Did it just kind of not pan out, or did it?
That was more about contaminants, though, and stuff.
Yeah, it was.
I don't know. That outfit was not readily forthcoming with a lot of information and not getting back to us real quickly. So, my confidence level wasn't real high, and so, I haven't heard from them in quite some time as far as what they were entertaining for Wolf Lake a few years ago.
And you know, I forget which lake it is in Bellarmy that has starry stonewort. Have they have been successful in containing that?
I don't know. I would have to talk to them to see if it's held and its geographic extent or if it's been spreading.
Anecdotally, anybody who uses the accesses, who brings their boat from one lake or to the next lake or the other, every time you go someplace and there's an attendant there reviewing and checking and inspecting and talking to you about the importance of that, people are reminded to try to do the right thing. It'd really, be really hard to measure the impact of that, but it'd be really hard to miss that it is having an impact. And honestly, I've been all around the state, and I've heard lots of comments from people. They, the people who are doing that work at the landings for us are fantastic. People actually like going to Hubbard County landings and interacting with the staff that are at, I forget which agency is that that does that for us?
Always their staffing.
Always their staffing. That people, in some counties, I've had difficulty with the attendants at accesses. And here, people tell me that they have a good time coming to our accesses because they love the staff that are there, which just makes it easier for people to do the right thing.
And they really do do a good job with the decontamination statement. Station, I've used that multitude of times, and they're always very responsive to, so you can get it done. Because nobody wants to let their boat sit for two weeks and not use it. So, they're really good about that. Yeah, I think the education makes a difference in the inspections. But I, sometimes I wonder about the rapid response stuff, whether there's anything. Once it's there, it's really hard. Maybe some things like milfoil, if you catch it soon enough, you can keep it under control. But, yeah, it's unfortunate, but.
Generally, between this potential impact, which 260 and 180, and the impact that Brian's going to talk to us a little bit about, some of the shifts in human services would be about $1.5 million. And the governor's budget says we're not cutting county program aid, but our $1.6 million is just, right, it's just barely going to cover that. So, the proposal doesn't cut the aid, but it does increase our cost in a proportionate amount. And I'm going to give Brian some time during administrator updates to talk about some of the things he's helped me identify to share with AMC.
Anything else, Eric?
No, not unless you have other questions for me.
Any questions? All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Human Resources.
Good morning, Chair. Members of the board, Human Resources has before you today updates to our personnel policy with revisions. The items were presented to you in your packet with redline versions of the current policies and then the updates to that. The first item is the current Section 15. We have a leave of absence with and/or without pay. That Section 15 we would remove, and we have a new Section 16 that's been benefits that we would incorporate all those leave of absence items into Section 16. Therefore, then down the next item, Section 16 benefits. It's going through what those updates are with that. We've incorporated our annual employer contribution may change on an annual basis. We had that in policy. So, when we changed that for 2025 and realized we needed to update the policy, and if that's going to need to be updated every single year, we removed it from policy with the notation in the policy that we will have that communicated within our annual employee benefit summary that we do for our employees then, you know, as well, too, that they see that contribution. So, it's not removed, it's just moved to a different location for them. Other items in all these policy revisions have been reviewed prior by our labor attorney representative as well. So, in the wellness program updates, there was some language that they provided to give a little bit more background into the reasoning why and for the wellness program. The 16.04, the Earn Sick and Save Time, those are all reflective of the legislative changes that have happened in 2024 and then effective for 2025. The also 16.06, leave of absence, there were legislative updates that were made to that. As you will see and reflected in those sections, each item leave particular, say jury duty or bone marrow or nursing mothers or things of that nature. They all have statutory provisions, were required by law. So, I like to reference those. So, someday, somebody doesn't come along and say, "Well, what do we need this for?" Well, we need it because it's in statute. And it's also, it's just a nice, quick, good reference as well, too, if you want to go straight to the statute and read it there as well with that. Additional was added, a candidate for public office. We have that listed as item, and in the policy, this is new. We reviewed this with the all-policy changes as well, but with Personnel Committee as well, and talked about, you know, do we really need it in policy or not? And it was the decision and choice to add it to our policy for clarification and reference. As I reviewed everything again last night, one quick time before board, there's the first paragraph, it's like, oh, there's, this part of the sentence is not there. So, I will get that, get that added in there. Basically, that's about whether, if a person is approved for a leave of absence for candidacy for an office, that they may or may not take and use their accrued time on the books.
Is that the one on page 26, number N?
It was, yeah.
Yeah, I saw that, too.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, so it's like, oh, okay, you can look at it how many times? How many people look at it? But nice that it's caught now, and then we can get it in there for the final. And then 16.07, we've had expense reimbursement of meals and incidental. We discussed this at Personnel Committee as well, too. Prior personnel policy, we had definitions, basically, and they're about breakfast, lunch, and dinner. And we added those back into this current policy then as well, too. Basically, more clarification ease for the employee of what the policy and how the policy reads, and then also the administration of it as well, too. So, that was Section 16. Section 24, in reviewing and asking the labor attorney as well, too, this is really, this is not a section that is needed to be within our personnel policy. So, that is a delete. And then Section 29, looking at the policy in whole, it's like we can work this and fit this into Section 16 of the benefits as well so we don't have to have a complete, separate section. So, that's incorporated into that. So, the request here today is for you to approve these updates to the personnel policy.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for Gina?
I'll move to approve.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It seems like we've been talking about this for a long time, and we have. And because this is relatively new, even though Cass County had done it for one of their ambulance service districts, that didn't require the coordination. This one did because it all resided within Cass County. So, this is the last resolution, I believe, that we need. We established the board, we established the district. This one is to establish the primary terms of, of the beginning of the organization of the district. It's identifying that the lead, the lead county will provide the administrative and financial support. And that shows that we've got 72% of the valuation for this district is in Cass County, 28% is here in Hubbard County. And we knew that, so the recommended composition is three commissioners from Cass and two from Hubbard. So, the final, the final approval here would be to approve this resolution that would establish these kind of, these orders. What do we do if this district dissolves? How do we handle the funds? How do we do all that? And then how do we actually name the people who are going to be on the board to start with? You'll note that this is all, this is all effective. It'll be effective now, but the district will actually have authority and be able to tax starting in January 1 of 2026. So, the board would be established now, but they wouldn't have a budget until 2026, which creates a couple of issues, probably not terribly large issues. One would be the members meeting on this district wouldn't be able to draw per diem from that taxing entity in 2025. And when Josh Stevenson and I talked about this, we said, "Fairly reasonable that the board would consider to cover that as they had been under the ad hoc for those members for the balance of 2025, and then in 2026, we'll prepare a budget and part of the operating revenue." Some of the administrative and operating costs will come from whatever levy that they administer. So, that, that's the, kind of the long and the short of this is we'd, I'd ask for approval, someone to approve the adoption of the resolution and to identify the two members to serve on this board. And then, once, Cass is doing this as well this morning, once we identify those names, Josh and I will work and, Josh mostly, because we just identified they'd be responsible administratively for this group to coordinate the first meeting of the group and walk through that process. I'll still be attending these meetings because I think it's really important that we're represented there. But it's also really important that we identify who's going to handle the financial transactions and who's going to be responsible for providing the administrative support to this board. So, it would be asking to approve the resolution and identify the two members to serve. The Cass County members are the same districts that are engaged in that ambulance service district. I'm guessing that's going to continue to be the same here, but I'll let you make that motion.
I would agree with that.
Makes the most sense.
I have a question about the reimbursement. So, with the reimbursement, I would assume it would be like all the other committees are on. The county pays, and they would reimburse the county at some point when they get a budget up and running versus having each commissioner?
To claim forms submitted to different entities.
I would guess that just for 2025, we would consider to reimburse our commissioners for their participation in that out of our commissioner budget. And then in 2026, they would actually have to file a claim with that board.
Much like when you go to Mississippi Headwaters Board, Ted, you know, he fills out a claim for Mississippi Headwaters.
Well, my question would be then if the reimbursement would be less than what you're getting from the county?
That will be determined by that board.
Well, but I'm thinking of boards that I'm on that I don't file directly with the board. I send to the county, and at the beginning of the year, I tell them to send whatever they're going to reimburse me to the county. So, that just seems much cleaner as far as the commissioner?
So, we could do it either way.
Okay.
And Josh and I will coordinate on that.
Yeah, just a thought.
For now, the understanding is that Hubbard County is going to pay for our two commissioners to participate in 2025 and 2026. It'll be out of that other budget, whether they're paying directly or reimbursing us. That's a very good clarification.
So, I would agree with Dave. I'll make a motion, but, and also that the two representatives from Hubbard County would be the representatives that the district is involved.
Okay. Can you maybe add to your motion that it would be added to the committee list for, just to make it formal?
Yeah.
Modify the committee list for 2025 to include this.
Yeah, and so, instead of putting in names because they come and go, put in the district.
Districts, yeah.
Yeah.
I'll second.
All right, any more discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? All right, motion carried.
And then Administrator's Report. Brian, if you want to come forward, do you want me to share this email so you have the numbers in front of you that you and I were talking about? Or do you have them off the top of your head?
I got them. I got them. Mr. Chair, Commissioners? Just come, as you have heard, obviously, that there's going to be a proposed cost shift to the counties. And it really, so just to start off with, the waiver services. And I brought Mike along if you have any questions on that. The last, I don't know, 10 years or so that they've, we haven't had a waitlist or been?
Yeah, roughly 10 years.
Roughly 10 years. So, we were directed by DHS that there's no waitlist, and basically, you can't say no to requests that, for people that are on waiver services, like. And so, with that, it's kind of been just, you just keep giving the requests, and it has, you know, it has gotten to be a point where it's a lot. But now, they're requesting that even though we didn't make those rules, that we would not have a waitlist. We're going to continue that process, but now we have to shift it. And again, you know, we're looking at roughly $800,000 just for that one alone, which on our budget is quite a bit, right? And so, you're looking at huge cost shift for us, which we're not necessarily the most popular as it is when it comes to eating the budgets. And so, with that, you have your, the sex offender program, 40% shift. I mean, that's $170,000, but that could be a lot more depending on who we have going to the sex offender programs. So, if they're at Moose Lake, if something happens and somebody, we get one or two, it could be significant. It would be, you know, it could be upwards. It would be, you know, it could be upwards of a million dollars. You just don't, you know, that's a hard one. That's one of our budget item lines that we keep. We budget fair enough on it, but we know that we have money to back it up. You know, those are those placements that we we don't have control of, and I'm sure you guys are aware of that. And yeah, then the the behavioral, the direct actor direct access, that's another tough one. It would probably be above fifty thousand annually for us, but it all depends on, you know, what the the problems and the and the behavioral health items that we get year to year. It does, it's not necessarily consistent, so it's it's really is. It's, I mean, we're looking at a one point one roughly um million dollar shift in in our budget of what we have, we're asking four point two. I mean, that's considerable. It's a considerable increase that we'll be having to cover.
So if you look at the this the the A B C Ds that he that Brian responded to were specific questions that Matt Hilgar from AMC sent out to all the county administrators and asked for their their summary of how they think these these four items would have an impact on their local county budgets. Um and you can see that um a one point one million dollar increase, cost shift to Hubbard County, is a five percent increase on the on the total property tax levy. But it's a twenty percent inc- twenty-six percent increase on to on the the existing uh human services levy. And that's significant. And we're probably um amongst the lowest impacted. There are many other counties that uh have a higher caseload or have um have had people in waiting lines for services like this. If they have to meet these same standards, their costs are going to go up even higher.
And I tend to estimate uh a fairly. I don't try, I don't want to, I don't like to estimate too low or, you know, to the highest point. I I like to estimate fairly. And so it could be, again, it could be a lot more, could be a lot less. But then when you look at some of the other cost shifts that we're getting from DHS, D C Y F, I mean, this is this is just another part of it where they're they've mandated these things, they've funded them, and now they're saying they're mandated and you you guys have to pay for it now. And and so it's just one of those things where.
Well, this is uh obviously you have to prepare for this.
Mm-hmm.
Because but but it's it's a preliminary budget.
Correct.
It's, there's a whole nother side that has to engage on this and has something to say about it besides all the counties, too. So highly likely it's not going to end up here.
Right.
But one of the questions that I would ask of you guys is uh, you know, if something like this were to happen or parts of it, is there anything we can eliminate or cut or do in response to it besides just pay for it? Because these are decisions that are being pushed upon us.
Right.
We should be able to or try our best to find, okay, what's our reaction to it going to be besides just taxing more?
Correct, yeah, and and there are some things that we can that we can do, and it'll all really kind of depend on how how what comes out in the language, right? But there um I will look at every option to um to figure this out with what the budget that we have to make it work, whether it's, I mean, there are some voluntary services, you know, voluntary placements that we could look at not necessarily funding. Do I think that that would be a great plan? No, but it i- if we need to, we need to, you know? And, you know, there's other things that have come up, too. Sanford Health being one of them, and, you know, we have, they signed a host county contract with Beltrami County. And this is just an example right off the top of my head because I just looked at it. We had an individual that was placed uh that placed themselves uh it at risk at Sanford Emergency for Mental Health and their mental health hold, they were there. And because of statute and how it's written, Sanford, um they bill their the insurance companies first. The counties are the payer of last, what they call last resort. But that one patient for five days, it cost us ten thousand dollars. We had no control over them being placed there, how long they were there. And and I have a real problem with that, I really do. When we don't have control of of somebody's cases or or somebody where they're being placed and whether you know, whether the doctors are right or wrong or indifferent, but we don't have the involvement to be able to say we have a better spot for them. That would maybe be, but we're paying nineteen hundred dollars a day to Sanford on a contract that we never signed, it was a host county contract. So there's things like that that are just they just make my my blood pressure rise a little bit because it's not, I mean, it's out of our control and there's nothing else. We, I've refused and I've put it off many times. And I was told by, you know, Jonathan at one point, he's like, just we're just you have, we legally have to pay it, Brian, you know? And it's like, okay, well, I'll do that, you know, looking at any different other ways. And the state could, DHS could offset this funding with all of the money they get from um the Anoka treatments, all that stuff when we're paying, you know, when, again, as a county, we're paying upwards of two to five hundred thousand dollars a year, and that money doesn't go. Now, they say this year it will go back in, but I don't know, we haven't seen it. But that money could go back into those programs as opposed to other.
Frustrating part is, and not to get political here because it's doesn't do any good. But, you know, we had a surplus and we created a whole bunch of new programs and spent a lot of money that's going to be when we couldn't even take care of the programs we have. Can't take care of health and human services, can't take care of public safety, you know? Can't take care of our infrastructure half the time, can't take care of our nursing homes. I mean, it's just, it's insanity. And it's like, I would like a copy of this, too, that put together, Jeff, because I I I need to be really well versed on this before the legislative conference.
So my um after sending this information to Matt Hilgar, Matt said, have you sent this to your representatives? So my question to you out of this is is the same as what Eric was asking. I'm assuming you'd like us to draft our response to these cost shifts in a memo to our to our representatives and a copy to Governor Walz and you make that avail, you know, sign that by the Board of Commissioners and and send that to them and give that to you so you have these this information. And obviously, when we talk about meetings to note, we're going to be talking about the legislative conferences in two, three weeks to find out who's going down for that. But um I'm hearing that as, yes, we'd like a letter drafted from Hubbard County relative to the cost shifts that we've talked today and and the impact that that would have here on local taxpayers. I think that's the I think that's the angle that AMC is is trying to have the conversation about, is is a cost shift to from from state from state uh revenues to additional property tax revenues is still a is still a cost shift, it's not.
And we need to look into long-term care effects, too, because I know that was part of his proposal was to cut some out of that, too, because that could have a huge impact on.
I'll I'll do some research and see if we can do some estimates there as well. We were talking before the meeting, um, you know, the one of the biggest challenges relative to the twenty-five, twenty-six and in twenty-seven, twenty-eight budgets for the state of Minnesota is the is the reduction in the estimates for revenue, right? Yes, there were additional programs that were added. If we were having conversations about who, how we balance, who pays for what in a in a time when we weren't also strapped for cash, we would be having different conversations. And we might, we might look at that and say, it's a good idea for, in the case of the of the adult waivers program, we don't currently have a cost share with that. Do we?
Very little.
So uh the proposal for there to be a cost share at the local level means that there's some accountability at the local level relative to the caseload there. We might agree that that's, we might agree that that's an idea, that's a good idea. But but having that conversation basically under the threat of budget is is a problem. And shifting from ten percent to forty percent on the on the sex offenders is just really a random number to generate a dollar amount.
If they're going to shift some of that stuff, you know, and like you said, that's a good conversation to have. But then if you're asking us to pay for it, give us better control of it. So we can maybe find savings and make better decisions.
One hundred percent. And and I know you guys have trusted me now over the last five years to to really um manage a budget. And I feel like um we have done really well with that. I know, and we'll talk about it probably after this, but our financial reporting, we got another letter. We've get a letter every year from um the Commissioner of Human Services for um our the audits and all our key quarterly fiscal stuff. So I I want to touch on that as far as we are probably one of the most fiscally responsible human services units agencies in the state. And we do a really good job at it. So I just want you guys to know that um if these, if all this were to come true, I will, we will get dig in and find a way so that it doesn't all come back and fall on um the taxpayers. Because um there's there's ways, but you're right, Commissioner, that if we do have to have some share of that, I would like to have some say, um just like the Sanford one. I, they could hold them for a month, a whole month without contacting us and looking for us to help with a different placement. And then we just have to pay, no say. And I I don't agree with that at all. If we're going to be paying for things, we least have to have a voice at the table and some decision-making power. Because I know that there are places and things that we can do that are less restrictive than just holding somebody at the emergency room. I know there are there's struggle with finding options, but we can do it. I'm very confident in our our staff to be able to do that and be be creative, so.
So this took great discussion time yesterday at M R C. I'm just going to touch a little bit on the African American Preservation Act. I've already talked to Brian about this. A neighboring county noted that this bill passed in the Senate forty-one to twenty-six and in the House it passed a hundred twenty to zero. And Krista Knutson and Mark Winger were assured when the bill was brought forth that this would not become a cost to the county, any of the counties. And so they're looking um to enact this across the state in twenty twenty-six. I don't know if anybody else went to this presentation at AMC in December besides myself from here. But I talked to Brian because they don't even have a program for the computer to work, and so they're expecting Brian's department to put this on an Excel spreadsheet to make this work. So this is just an example of how sometimes what what is perceived as a good idea, and I haven't dug into it, so I don't know, you know, but but they it it's a cost now that they're telling counties that they need to, they're going to have to foot the bill, plus the state's not ready for even the information that they asked. So a neighboring county said that they're looking at it just for this program alone. They're looking at a twenty percent increase to their levy next year. And Brian has assured us that you guys have been doing all along a lot of things that they're asking every county to do, so that particular portion wouldn't be a huge impact for our county.
Right, and and again, it all, it really depends on what the final hit point is for us. But we do a lot of the active efforts versus passive efforts or however they want to word it. We do a lot of that anyways, and I think I explained that um before, too, that in, we do it in a way that um are is able to track because we don't aren't forced to track it the way that they they would like. But if it comes out, yes, it's going to cost. I mean, it'll cost us a little extra just because then we have to then record that and we have to track that and send that stuff in, but we're already doing it, you know? We are already doing it, it's going to cost, but it's not going to be as big of a cost share as a cost increase as other counties that haven't been doing that before. And so yeah, the the systems won't, the S S I S, it won't, I mean, you're not able to track in that, which I'll be honest, it blows my mind. I mean, we we do so many things in this world and within technology, but when it comes to the state and federal government, we we're way behind, way behind. And it just it's unfortunate, it's a lot of cost, a lot of cost. And um it's making everybody in our state, I think, a little stressed out.
They did say yesterday that our representation here locally at the state level is already working on this.
So I'm I'm making a note after this conversation and Commissioner Dela Hunt's request to say what are what are the potential impacts over at Heritage? I've already sent an email to Angie and Stephanie and asked for them to give me an estimate. But um we'll be working this through at the department head level and providing updates as best we can. No one person can track all of the things running through legislative process. So I think if we ask everybody to work with their professional organizations and track the items that are going to be coming down and just try to keep a list running for you to have that information. And whenever we find something that we think we ought to we ought to engage at some level, uh we'll just keep coming back to this group and and saying, well, here's 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 a way we think. Here's something we think we should do above and beyond what AMC or M R C are representing on, because this is probably the year where they need to hear directly from us.
And as you all know, unfortunately, the answers are are going to eventually come real fast because of the delay we've got without getting and it just the delay of the of the of the process now, it's going to come down to things are going to hit when they actually start working. Everybody, it's going to hit and it's going to be a quick quick turnaround. So there's got to be, um, I've been staying very active with what going and attending the the N A C O and AMC and different things just to try to learn and gather in more info. But as you guys know, I'm sure that you've sat in on some of those, too. There's not a lot of solid answers or even, it's a lot of speculation just because we don't know yet what it's going to look like, but.
It could be a good year for you to join us at the legislative conference.
I I was actually, I spoke with Jeff about that and um I I uh I'm thinking.
We typically haven't had their representation down there, but this year might be a good year.
Yeah, it's, I would agree.
Yeah.
And they talked yesterday, and also there was an article run in the Park Rapids Enterprise. Schools are also, they don't know what to do with the unfunded mandates, they don't know how they're going to financially cover.
Right. It's it's an unfortunate unfortunate cycle that we've hit. And um we're, well, as you guys know, we'll get through it and we will be um we'll be okay and the people we serve will still get served. It just, we'll have to get creative on how we go about doing it. And and Mike had mentioned, as we were talking about it, I don't know if you want to just explain about how the more the complex the cases are, which they are, the cost actually will be the more work we do will actually mean more money that than we will spend because we're responsible for that cost shift. And so um with, again, with the cases getting more and more complex, it's going to end up costing us more money each year, depending on the the complexity caseload and what it costs, so. But good news is is, what's that?
Something's got to give at some point in time.
And and the good news is, is, you know, we've had some with, you know, working with Jeff on on our budget and some some foresight as far as unexpected costs. So we we've been working to um kind of prepare for a moment like this or an event like this that we could. So um unfortunately for other counties, they aren't in the same position as we are. We're very fortunate. And uh again, we'll make it through our, I don't, the there may be some services that are, you might hear from some of your constituents about it, but um, you know, we're going to do the ones that we're going to do the services that need to be um provided, that are mandated to provide. And we will do it as fiscally responsible as we can.
So if you recall, there was a neighboring county that would have had to file bankruptcy a few years ago if the state hadn't stepped in. And so if there's a lot of cost share here and and you look at what levies are going to possibly be, it's a really dire situation.
Potentially, we're 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 in one of the best positions.
We are, but I'm talking about other counties.
I'm not going to play Chicken Little, this guy has fallen yet.
No, no. Right, but we are, we are. Right. But we are, we are in a way better position because that, that county specifically that I don't know what you're talking about, that cost shift could bankrupt them without saving. I mean, then there's no other way to put it. They just, and it's not necessarily their fault. It's the area, there's gotta be a different way of doing things. And so, again, I think that we are in the best situation, and I am so glad that I am here as opposed to anywhere else, and I really appreciate you guys' leadership and, and support in the things that we, that we do and how we do things. So, I don't wanna, wanna be anywhere else.
Everything points to the fact that we need to be engaged this year more than we ever have in the past. So, I'll draft a letter summarizing that, those impacts that we talked about. I'll include anything that I get from Heritage Operations. And the last item on that list that you saw, and it might have been anecdotal to you, but when they passed the cannabis legislation, they passed it saying that there was gonna be costs, you know, there were gonna be, some of the tax was gonna be drilled out to cities and counties. And the first thing in there is that's gonna be cut, and I'll stay in the general fund.
Yeah.
So, again, that's, that's another one of those issues where legislation passed because there was an agreement on how revenues were gonna be shared. And then revenues are not shared in the same way. The same thing happened in two thousand two, I think, when they took the state general sales tax apportionment that was gonna come back to school districts and just left it in the general fund, so.
They just leave it there, and who knows where it goes from there? Oh, yeah, that's.
So, one of the points I've been trying to make at AMC too, and this is an example where, you know, we always ask for more money to fund more things. Everybody, everybody does, cause the state mandates more and more things, okay? But that is a tail end too. And you're seeing it right now, because now when the state has to cut, okay, somebody's gotta pick up the boat. So, you know, my argument, you know, that I push AMC all the time is, can there be other solutions besides just asking for money for crying out loud? Can we, can we, can we look at stuff and make it simpler? If you are gonna, like I said earlier, turn it back to local control, then give us authority to do things. Quit, quit regulating the daylights out of things to the, that there's no flexibility. The, those are the areas where it has to change when you don't have the money. And there doesn't seem to be an appetite for that at all. So, the, everybody goes down and just continues to ask, well, we need more money. We need more money, and you never get it. And if you do get it, you're in a situation like we're in now, where you gotta start to roll back things that you created that causes a lot of pain. And it's like, they gotta, they gotta back off the requirements and let some flexibility come into this so people can get efficient and do a better job.
And you know, like going back to the waiver stuff, cause obviously that's the biggest chunk. When there was a waitlist, it's not like people were being neglected or that there wasn't things. It just allowed the counties to budget properly so that we could get the services and get them, get the individuals, the things that they needed, and then move them on to other things. And then it, when that money frees up again, then we can, we could go. And so, that, again, that is not, having a waiting list isn't a bad thing. It is, it is a control measure that we can use to mitigate just the money printing machine.
Like time value of money.
Right, exactly, a hundred percent.
How do they determine no wait?
What's that?
What does that mean, no wait?
No waitlist. Like, doesn't, if somebody requests something and you can't say no, and if you run out of money when your waiver budget, how much money do we?
Yeah, so like, no waitlist. If there's, if someone's assessed and they meet that level of care, we can't put a roadblock into when we can provide that service. If they're, if they're eligible and, and financially eligible at the same time, we need to get it to a case manager and begin looking for or finding a service that meets that, that need. Where in the past, we could have said, no, we're at threshold currently. Look at your cases that you have open. See if you can move things around, limit hours. Maybe someone doesn't need twenty hours this, this week. They only need ten of this service that, and then bring someone back on.
So, if I, if I'm your client, and I, I'm on a no wait, but the service that I need isn't available here? It's only available two hundred miles from here? Does that mean that you have to transport?
Transport or, or move. So, we, we do, we have been transitioning lots of people outside of Hubbard County to live in foster care homes or with other family members to seek service. If you choose not to, then you sit in an area where you go unserved. And we did, we continue to case manage and try to find someone or develop, try to bring providers in. We're getting, we're kinda lucky on some, some services, but yeah, it's either one or the other. Either you sit at home eligible for a service and go unserved, or we move, or encourage you sort to move.
One of the, one of the concerns with Prime West is that services, because of, of the low reimbursement rate, a lot of providers are no longer in the rural area. So, then how do you?
Yep. I mean, we, you know, we, in Region Two Adult Mental Health, we work with Lake of the Woods County, and for the longest time, they haven't had anything. So, now they're paying some providers a pretty good amount of money to come up there, you know, and meet with their clientele. So, yes, the rural stuff has, has diminished. But to the waiver, waiver budget, I can't remember, I don't know the exact numbers of how much we went over.
We got an additional one point six million last year.
From the state. They, they paid, they paid it, but that's because of what we had budgeted, and then because there's no waitlist, no option to say no, the state just had to, they just said, yep, you just, you have your budget, but when it's over, you keep submitting, and then they'll reimburse. I'm with you Commissioner, that how, when does that, that can't continue forever. And there are better, not saying that we don't provide the service, but there are better options to do it so that we can at least regulate and control and be able to be responsible to the taxpayers.
So, Minnesota's kinda historically likes to flip back and forth every couple of years, right? And if we've got a, a Republican House, we have a Democratic governor, and if we have a Republican governor, we, Minnesota just really likes to create chaos. Balance or create chaos or whatever, but historically, that's always been the case. And what ends up happening is that instead of going through and identifying the best, most efficient way to provide services to people, we put a layer of oversight on top of a layer of oversight on top of a layer of oversight. So, instead of, you know, three quarters of our hours and three quarters of our dollars going to pay for services, you know, half of that money is now paid for people to watch the watchers. And nothing's more evident of that than the number of buildings that they built in St. Paul, the house, the number of staff. Department of Health and Human Services is Department of Health and.
It's three now, and it's now three, it's now three, so they're gonna need another building. And that's, and, and that's not because the population of the state of Minnesota has grown. It is likely because the number of eligible people for, for care has grown primarily in the aging sector.
Yep.
But it, but it, it's, it's more related to people just overseeing and overseeing and overseeing. And at some point, the only way to fix that is to, is to start, start over. Just, right. And, and you know, and that was about, and you, I don't know any of any county human services or health and human services director that would disagree that the worst thing they could have done with DHS is let them break up into three different.
Oh, yeah.
Because it was one, it was about a billion silos inside of that one unit, but now you've got three. And the direct care and treatment, the gentleman that's in charge of that, all control, and he didn't even, I think at the point that we, he was at a Maxa meeting with us, and they did not want on their board, the direct care and treatment, they run Anoka and, and St. Peter, didn't want county involvement at all, or have any say on their board whatsoever, Marshall was his name. And, and that is where all that money is just sucked into like a vacuum. And so, you have, now you have three, three units that are watchers over watchers over watchers. The.
Need a Department of Government efficiency to come in the state of Minnesota.
If they, if, if the Doge came to Department of Human Services and Department of Child and Youth and Families and Direct Care and Treatment, it would be, I mean, I think they would have a hard time con, having, you know, conceiving the fact of how much oversight on oversight on oversight.
No, no good private business would ever operate, they'd be out of business before they got started. Not that government can always operate like private business, differences, but it's like.
But they, we have, the counties have to have a voice. We have to have a legitimate voice. Cause right now, we say a lot of things and it falls on deaf ears. It really does. I mean, in Maxa, I don't know how many, you know, how many letters we draft and, and plans that we send to our legislators. And the legislators, I'm sure, are just as tired of it as well. The, the, we, we are DHS and DCYF and DCT control everything, and it, they, we don't get a say. We get zero say on everything.
And the madness down there is not what works up here.
No, no.
Not even close.
No. We, we have the ability or the inability, depending on how, how it is, of doing things. We don't, we can't do things just like the metro area, you know, and they, they have such high caseloads and stuff, and they're sending people up here for different placements that, you know, than we don't have placements which would be fiscally more responsible for us to have somebody local in here, but when the beds are filled, and there's one open now down there because they're, we couldn't figure it out.
I wonder how this country survived for a hundred and eighty years with no social services, you know?
I mean.
Not saying that we don't need social services, but it's, it's just kinda interesting. It gets to the point, it grows, it grows, it grows, and grows, and grows. And then to undo it is a nightmare. Causes a lot of pain because it basically creates a lot of dependency.
I, I, yeah, I mean, there's.
Resistance to it. Resistance to the change when you get all that dependency.
And I'm not just speaking of social services, I'm just government in general. Creates, you start to get money and just changes things, and it's really hard to undo it.
So, one of the examples that you gave, Mike, was, you know, sending somebody in foster care out of the area to receive services. But then Brian, what you're talking about is perhaps it isn't in the best interest of that child to be taken out of the area. And so, with local control, you could work to accomplish both things.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause there's things that we can do. We're, I like to think that we're a lot more creative than some of the other counties in the fact that we have to be, right? We're in rural Minnesota, you have to be creative. And a lot of that creativity, not necessarily centered around trying to save money, but trying to do the best for the client, but also benefits in saving money as well. And so, just more, more say, more control, or even a little bit of control would be better than, at least than what we've got, which is nothing. Sorry, didn't mean to ramble. It's been a, it's been a, I will say this probably been one of the, even with COVID, this has been one of the more stressful months I've had in this job of trying to just identify and look and see what's coming. And I feel like, I feel like a, a blind person in a, you know, in a, in a firefight. It's, you just don't know. You don't know where it's coming. You don't, you know it's coming, but you don't know where, when, or who.
Well, we haven't even talked about the potential impact of federal, federal shutdowns. If, if that ends up happening, most of this money is allocated through the state as a result of grants from the federal government, so.
That's what I figured. If, if it actually gets this bad, you have to really look at what you're not gonna do.
Correct. We would.
Because you don't have a choice, cause you, you can't just absorb all this.
No, correct. And it would be what I would imagine, what we've talked about at Maxa and some different things, is it would be just a, a survival mode. You know, what's, what is the core things that we need to do to help the people to survive and get the critical care that they need and the services, and then finding ways, again, we're creative.
Get them helped through some nonprofits and things like that.
There's gonna be some nonprofits, but some of those might be hit too. It depends. But in the end, we'll figure it out, and we will serve the people that we are tasked to serve with and that we know we can help. It just might be at a smaller capacity, and it might be down to more critical care stuff, so. Lots, again, my brain is tired already just from all the things that I've, I'm trying to look at ahead of time to see what we can mitigate and what we can do better.
So, we'll do due diligence on that, and we'll get engaged. And at the end here, we'll talk about who's gonna go to the legislative conference, and I'll get that letter drafted that we talked about. But happy news, good news, and this, this letter is completely understated. So, can you talk about the impact of, of our staff work to meet these higher grades and how big of a deal that is? Because this letter is super understated, and obviously was, was sent.
It, I mean, you know, we, there are so many reports that are, and so many things that go into those reports, just the Seeger report. That's all the reports of, it basically takes all the hours and all the tasks and everything that our social workers do that they put into SSIS. And, and it takes those, those and puts them Nebraska's that they're put into, and then those reports go in, and that's how we get reimbursement. But it takes every one of our staff, to include case aides, to do that correctly so that we are, we are billing correctly. And that's just one of them. I mean, you have, again, Nebraska, brass-based grant fiscal report, putting that together, the consolidated fund. It's, it's a bear. It really is. And our, our staff, our whole agency, it really is includes everybody. I mean, our, our fiscal staff, you know, submit the reports and do those things, but the case aides, the office support specialists up front, you know, getting things in the right place, the supervisors, you know, staying diligent and working, working with the employees to make sure that we're doing things that are more, the most efficient, and then getting them in, all in on time. I mean.
It means, it means that we're maximizing the revenue.
Yes.
That we can get from all of those, all of those funds, because we're dotting the i's and crossing the t's, accounting for everybody's hours while we're providing the services to the community that.
And we're doing it on time, effectively and efficiently, one of the, probably the top ones in the state.
Priority number one is making sure you're getting all the revenue you got coming.
It's, it's just, it's doing, it's doing really good homework to make sure we're getting, getting paid for all the work that we possibly can.
Hiring guys like Mike, stealing him from Beltrami County, because Mike is, I can't say this enough, is, is been a huge cog in the wheel for us with our reimbursement rates and with just making sure that we are maximizing those.
Good to hear, because when you, prior to you coming up over, when we had the interim there, this is one of the areas that was identified that we were having, struggling.
We, I, I'm, I'm just giving him kudos because he knows, he came from a, a place that he knows the, the, the system and knows how to, well, and now that, knows how to reach out and get to people and make those connections so that we are maximizing our billing and maximizing our revenues while still doing the work.
One of the counties shared how frustrating it is to work with SSIS, and so you might be almost done with your report, and it just shuts down, and then you have to start all over again. So, your staff can't even maximize their time like they need to.
And that's where my specialty of, of morale comes in, and just trying to stay upbeat for the, you know, because part of my job is the rah rah guy. I gotta be, and that's, I, I like it, but recognizing the people that do the work. I could be up here every board meeting with about ten or fifteen things that are, that are, are worthy of noting, but the employees are working, you know. They, they, they are literally working every minute of every day extra to get this done. And so, they're doing a great job. And yeah, that's my job, is to, is to keep them motivated and going. And I found that catering Qdoba for Christmas is a thing that they absolutely love, and it, you know, it comes out of my pocket, but I, if that's all I have to pay to have a, a great agency of seventy-some people that are just doing good work and are happy, you know, that's what you gotta do. So, our agency is, is awesome. I, I don't, I sit in many meetings and I hear a lot of, a lot of things of, you know, the other directors talking about, you know, this problem, that problem, and I just quietly sit now because I, we don't have those. It's, it's a really good, a really good vibe, and I don't know.
Do you remember when we did a strategic planning session with your supervisors, maybe three years ago?
Mm-hmm.
Remember the outcome of that? The one, the one sentence statement that they, that they made out of that?
What was it? I.
They, after about twenty minutes of conversation. They after about twenty minutes of conversation, the supervisors agreed that their mission was or was we keep families together. And that and I'm like, I'm done. We don't have to do any more work with that group because they understand what their goal is and they understand the complexity of that, but they're they're nailing that too. So I wanted to make sure that we spend a little time talking about that because as as I said, that letter is the way it's written is understated.
Very much understated.
How many are you fully staffed or are there still openings?
We have one that we've now one position, but we've offered uh, or we're making an offer within for that's for adult adult mental health. And the only reason that opening exists is because the current person that's there received their master's degree and now is going to be um, providing counseling within the area, which is awesome too. You know, yeah, we we're losing somebody that's really good. However, uh, we're gaining somebody within our community or within the area, within our region, that'll be able to provide services that are are lacking. So it's bittersweet, uh, but it'll be, um, I have no doubt that the next person coming in will crush it and just keep going. One of the only places it's fully staffed for quite a while that I'm starting to catch a little bit more flack from our local or surrounding counties. Just so you're aware. Any other questions, comments, concerns about that? I again, I I I would like to attend the the legislative conference and be there. And I will keep you guys up to date on um, everything as as fast as I can to let you guys know what the impact potential is.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Mr. Chair, I have two brief updates. One is we finally got the corrected deed back on that seventeen acre proposal across from Potlatch and we're able to complete the closing with Rakes LLC last week. So that's good. That's done. Um, and then we had our um, our first Zoom meeting with Clifton Larson Allen relative to coming in and doing doing the study for us of our financial operations. Uh, I think that meeting went really well. Marie Knutson and I were in on that and walked through their it's obvious they've done this before because the the agenda that they gave us was eighty percent of what we needed, and I asked a couple of other questions of things we'd like to include. We are going to be having um interviews on here onsite next Thursday and Friday. And one of the things that I asked is because I told you that we would be accountable to this group and this board relative to that process is that we conduct interviews with at least one, if not both, of the members of the General Government Committee, so that Chair and Vice Chair will be scheduling you in for conversations interviews during that. And if they don't work out on that in that timeframe while they're here, then obviously we can come up with a remote one. But when I get that schedule, I'll be sharing that with you so we can get you in on the front end of that. And then, as I talked, we would be reviewing the process of that with the General Government Committee, even if we have to meet a little more regularly and then provide updates when we hit milestones with this project. But it it sounds it sounds like they know exactly what they need to do for us. And that our staff are ready to do that work too. So I think those are all the updates that I had.
Okay, um, if there's nothing else, then we'll do committee reports. Who wants to start?
I can.
Good, go ahead.
Heritage for December. Uh, our star ratings remain the same all the way across the board, four all the way across the board. We had three new hires, four terminations, uh, zero open FTEs yet. Uh, we had sixteen applicants. Our retention's at seventy-two percent, turnover's at forty-two percent, and we still remain at a hundred and nineteen total number of employees. I didn't get the December financials in the email of the board packet. I had it in the car. It's in my car and bring it in. But December was a tougher month, so I'll just summarize. We did have positive cash flow. You had negative cash flow on the living center, but the others had positive cash flow, compensated makeup, all of that. But we did have a small like less than ten thousand dollar negative net income for the month of December. Census was down a little bit was the the biggest thing. And then some some uh, cost changes too that were unique to the month. So hopefully we're back on track come January. So far, still still in a positive overall for the year. And that's all I've had this last week.
HLDC?
HLDC, uh, nothing really pressing there. Remember, uh, we did get we did get a hundred thousand dollar childcare grant to put the two childcare things into Pinecrest. So we're working headlong to get those. I've identified several potential applicants that are interested. So hopefully we'll have that rolling and start being able to fill some voids there.
Okay, I had MRC, a lot of this I've shared. I'll try uh, hit any other points. Um, Senator Mark Johnson was there talking. Both the Democrats and Republicans are trying to find a way to address fraud issues. The Republicans are asking the Democrats to address permit reform. But there's no action taken there. There's two bills that have been introduced or they're working on for COVID reform to redefine the emergency powers and um, the process to limit the powers. Someone from Nolan County asked about um, the transfer of land between the First Nation and Senator Johnson didn't think anything would move forward this year because of the makeup in the House and then also because of President Trump's election where and how that affects federal things. We already talked about the budget. Committee chairs have all been given notice that likely every area will have a budget cut. Just to remind, M and M MRC priorities are the solid waste for the EPR defense, the potential score bill, and there's four MRC county commissioners on the AMC score committee. And then AMC has formed the solid waste work group. Transportation infrastructure, the LGR WRP coalition is up and running. And then we talked already about the Minnesota African American Family Preservation Act. Uh, Hennepin and Ramsey County uh, in January of this year have started a phase in program of that. And then Scott Johnson from Benton County talked about the resolution that they passed on one twenty-one to twenty-five encouraging the legislature to get back to work. AMC actually contacted them and suggested that counties are out of our lane if we send letters to the legislature. We had some discussion on that. Scott Johnson encouraged us to go and read their resolution and then to actually watch the discussion prior to their resolution. They were not addressing parties. They were addressing the legislature as a whole and their representation in Benton County had both Democrat and Republican House members. And so they are still feeling that what they did was the right action. So.
Could be out of our lane. The the whole purpose of AMC is to.
So someone else, someone else spoke up and said, because actually I spoke up and said, I how can that be out of our lane? And so someone else spoke up and said AMC has worked very hard to build relationships on both sides of the aisle. And so AMC said this could be perceived.
This isn't quite as black and white as the, to me, as the sanctuary city thing, but there comes a time where right is right and wrong is wrong, and you just you have to call it out. You can't, you can't be licking the finger and sticking it in the air. I get you don't wanna you don't want, you gotta keep those relationships sound, but there are times where you just have to say, come on.
And and we've already talked about this. One of the, one of the possible outcomes of this will be there won't be time to have good discussion and make good decisions about the budget. And then we all have ramifications. Every resident. So anyway, the next meeting is held in person at the legislative conference. So whoever is going.
Wednesday night, is it?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't have any reports because I was absent um, for any of the activities that went on for myself. So go ahead, Tom.
I had not too much. I got the Crow Wing one tomorrow, but I I had the SWCD meeting. I'm already discussing their regular business, such as financial things. Oh, one of the things out of the financial was that the state of Minnesota sent a check to them that was supposed to go to our highway department. So they had to go and do a resolution just to go and get that money to go from from them to the highway department. It's kind of interesting. The new plat books will be available in April. I told you about the little change of of those, you know, the townships will have a history map in there. Grazing workshop is this month. And then there's gonna be the Agroforest Institute workshop will be in September. And um, they've got a lot of interesting things on that. I might even wanna go to that, even if it's at my own expense and that has to do with um all like forest farming, repairing forest buffers, silver pasture windbreaks, carbon sequesteration, and a lot of different nice topics. It's a three day event. If anybody would be interested, I know I am. So I think that's starting on Tuesday, but I'll have to go to it a little bit late because we got our Tuesday meeting here.
That's about all I got.
Ted?
Let's see, head in the North Country Community Health Board. Was once again voted in as chair. Let's see, and we went over the normal stuff, you know, the uh, Pridium rates and luncheon dinners and the IRS reimbursement rates and everything. Also talked about the home health visits, uh, caseloads here in Hubbard County. It's twenty-five. We could do more and it's kind of based on, funding is based on what you did the prior year, so we're hoping to get an increase for next year. They also would ask us to do the Healthy Families American Survey as a company. They've got a a survey out. I haven't taken that yet. Let's see, WIC in the in the North Country, which is the three counties, Lake of the Woods, Clearwater and Hubbard. WIC had seven hundred and thirty-two participants in December, uh, seven hundred and twenty-one in November and seven hundred and twenty-three in October. See, also had a North Country or Northwestern Minnesota Juvenile Center. See, of course, like normal, we go over the financials and expense reports. Went over the programming updates, uh, the annual audit contract, just like with a lot of the audits that we deal with. And I've mentioned this before. All those are going up in price and it's just a sign of the times. Went over the proposed uh calendar for uh, meetings. Then we also went through the board appointments and when the terms expired. Welcomed Aiken Colony as a new county, uh, new member of the Northwestern Minnesota Juvenile Center.
Ted, is that Aiken or Atasca?
Atasca, excuse me. Thank you for correcting me. I didn't write that down here. I just got it here. But yes, yes, it was Atasca. And like I said before, Atasca was a big uh, big participant, sent a lot of kids our way. And I think it was important to keep them. And also had the Mississippi Headwaters Board there again, voted in his chair again. We have a the Mississippi Headwaters Board, as you know, we have jurisdiction over the first four hundred miles of the Mississippi River. We were, we'd found out that uh, Ten Lakes Township in Beltrami County, they have their own zoning and and stuff like that and and planning and zoning. They had approved a plat and a variance on Lake Andrusia, but they didn't get any okay from the Mississippi Headwaters Board. So we, our executive director reached out to them, had a nice conversation. Nothing adversarial there and not that they weren't, they just in a sense didn't know the process. So that all got taken care of. They actually kind of have pretty strict ordinances with to for their lake shores and stuff, so it was nice to see that. We also had a discussion on the tax forfeited land, how now when a parcel goes tax forfeited that it gets auctioned off. There is one on a lake in in Beltrami County. I believe it is also Andrusia again. There again, we deal with the Mississippi River and the lakes that the Mississippi River runs through. But there's a parcel that is gone tax forfeited and it's gonna go up for auction. There was some concern there, but I made the comment that tax forfeited land is as in this parcel wasn't private ownership. And now that it's gone tax forfeited and if it gets auctioned off, it will remain in private ownership. And that's not such a bad thing, but I think there was some that wanted to have the the county or the state be able to just take it and and put it in their inventory. Which there again, I I don't understand with some parcels where they go tax forfeited. If you can't afford your property taxes, I don't see why they just don't sell the parcel and and take care of it that way. Uh, let's see, we also did a letter of support for Northern Township. They're looking at doing their own uh, septics up there. Treatment facility and stuff would would actually cover then a large portion of portion of um, Lake Bemidji. And if this all goes through, it would end up, I believe the number was eighty-five percent of Lake Bemidji would be covered under a city sewer water, which would be good for the lake. And then, of course, we went over the executive director's performance review like we do every January. And there again, went over the calendar and and that was about it. I don't know if anybody has any questions.
Austin didn't.
Good, good. He looks good too. Yeah, we took December off, so that was nice.
Mr. Chair, I think I have one more thing too. I I missed, I don't know if you guys caught it, but in the January twenty-eighth email from AMC District Two, I saw that there was some discussion on tribal land acquisition position. And Beltrami County Commissioner Tim Sumner made a motion and it passed a resolution. I don't know if you wanna just look it up. It's good sized paragraph anyhow, but I thought they did a really good job in in staking a position on that.
And I was glad to see that Tim brought it forward.
Yeah, and so kudos to them for for keeping that front and center. But yeah, I thought the language they used in the motion stuff kind of summarized everything we had discussed on that issue before. So if you find that email, you can read it. It's very good.
Okay, and then I had one thing there in correspondence. The DNR has is making a proposal for a wildlife management area. It's in my district. It's between Mantrap and Thorpe Township. I haven't called to get the particulars about this, but uh, I'm gonna probably call this individual today just to talk about what's happening, um, if there's gonna be any impacts or anything. It appears both Mantrap and Thorpe Township have signed letters of support for it. So I just wanna look into it and see what it what it really involves. Anything else?
You know the which parcel it is and.
No, I don't. So I don't know if it's in private ownership now or partially private and public. I haven't heard, but.
I received that email too. I might reach out, find out what it's about too.
All right.
Corey. Yep.
Yeah, he talked with Corey as well. Right, if there's anything else, um, if there's nothing else, I would.
I guess I would like, we've got, of course, meetings to note and what's on the agenda for the work session?
We have a couple of items.
I was hoping to add one if it's not already on there.
What uh, what would that item be?
I'd like a discussion and probably have Corey Kimball here on a sign policy on tax forfeited lands. This is something I started, as you all know.
I can ask him to bring an update.
Probably about like a year, a year and a half ago or more, uh, probably about six months ago, Corey had sent me a draft policy. I think it's something I'd like to move forward and be done with it.
Okay.
Get it accomplished. Like I said, it's it's not a big issue. We don't have hundreds. I don't even know if we have a dozen signs on TFL land. Like I said, it's, it's not a big issue, we don't have hundreds, I don't even know if we have a dozen signs on TFL land, but it's something I was told in pass about, it's not, not in policy or something, but I think what it is, is there's not a policy against it, but there's not a policy for it.
Regulating it in any way?
Type of a thing. And um, like I say, I think it touches everybody's district. I, I know the one in, one that I found in David's has actually been redone, and then you got one in my district where they asked for permission and they were denied, so it's.
Yeah.
So like you say, if we could bring that forward, that'd be great.
I'll, I'll talk to Corey about it. I've got, you and I've got the latest email, we just need to move it forward.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, if there's nothing else, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
I.
Opposed? All right.